This is all of us except Duncan Duncan's not able to join us this evening. He sends his regrets. Um, so to get out of the building, it's actually more complicated up here, right? So.
Sure.
Do you wanna?
Excuse me, emergency procedures from the third floor here. There's stairwell and elevator where you came up. Uh, as well, if you go straight out and across through that door past restrooms, there's a second stairwell at the top of each stair. In the event that for some reason you can't go down, there's an emergency call button and an area of refuge. If you're at home, you know how to get out of your own house.
Yes. Okay, so um, any changes to the agenda? Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Alan saying no, okay. Very good. Um, and there's no, there's currently no um, public members in the room for those of you joining us.
There is one.
Oh, oh, now there's, yes. So we were just still on the item, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. If you didn't, okay. So announcements and staff report. Does anyone have any announcements?
The weather is nice.
The weather is nice, yes. Happy spring. Um.
One brief announcement uh, to share, um, well, actually two brief announcements to share. One is that uh, the council at their April seventeenth meeting is going to pick up their discussion of the remaining ARPA funds. So that's something that they had been talking about as a fall and during the budget season decided to uh, defer any further discussion decision making until the new council was seated and um, was had their sea legs under the little bit, so it'll be April seventeenth. And then the second one is that I'm uh, pleased to report that we have received the application for the south side of Market Street in the middle block. So construction has started here on the north side of Market Street in this middle block for uh, housing over first floor commercial. Something very similar has been submitted and proposed on the south side, uh, which is the other half of the agreement with University of Vermont, uh, together with Snyder-Braveman and again first floor commercial.
So which side of of market of Garden Street will that?
Between Garden and
Yeah.
And the Poon property on the far side of the street, so that whole middle block. Yeah, so the pieces are coming to play, coming into into place.
Anything else? Okay, we can jump right into the city plan twenty twenty four. Um, starting with the discussion on the water and public utilities section.
Yeah, so this is a very similar setup to the.
Do you have that?
Let's hold up. Um. It's the, the same sort of discussion as we were having last week. This is just the next section that we were dealing with. This section is um, have water and public utilities. So it is the aspects of water that have a, an infrastructure type component to it. So water provision of drinking water, um, wastewater, stormwater utility, plus the other public, other public or semi-private utilities like um, solid waste collection, telecommunications. Those are all in this section. Um, discussion of surface water and groundwater resources as like, as a resource would be in a different section. Um, this is more about the city's functioning of provision of water as a resource and conveyance away of wastewater and stormwater. Um, so there are a few things that are still missing from this. We have not gotten our um, capacity numbers from DPW for things like our wastewater treatment and our, and our potable water provision systems. Um, that's something that will be included, it isn't included yet. Um. And the other is that this plan does a little bit more in this draft, um, but may do even more moving forward to make the statement that we need to be aligning planning of our utilities with planning for our land use. Historically, they operated a little bit disconnectedly, so you know, land use and zoning and, and regulations will apply in certain ways in certain areas. And it didn't exactly map on to, you know, where sewer is provided or where it's planned to be or where it's not planned to be. So trying to tie those things to, those two things together was a statement that was made in this draft. Um, but it is something that didn't appear expressly in previous plans. So I just wanted to point that out. So it's same as, it's same as the last meeting, opening it up to um, policy level, policy statement level, questions, statements, concerns, um, things that you don't think are correct, things that should be added. All of that.
I, I have an overarching question.
Sure.
Um, would, would electricity be considered a utility? Cause it's not currently covered in here, but it seems
Yeah.
Kind of on par with like telecommunications and other.
Yeah, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different. It was originally more discussed in the energy chapter than was in the energy section that I gave you last time. Um. It could be included here. It's not intended to be included somewhere else, partially because GMP is not a South Burlington controlled um, utility, like the water ones are, but I get, I get your point that it's sort of on par with some of those.
South Burlington control the uh, should I put water district?
No, but there
Yes and no.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
We have, we have parts of that infrastructure are city owned.
Yeah.
Um, but it's more like telecommunications where, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense as long as in this chapter, we stick to the subject of it as a utility, as opposed to how we might use energy policy.
Yep.
But there are policies associated with utility like undergrounding of new materials, making sure that we've got room for
Yep.
Uh, for, you know, that we work with GMP to uh, create sort of looping and redundancy. So if there happens to be a break somewhere that the city doesn't go out. So I think it doesn't necessarily need to be long, but I think that's.
VGS as well.
Yeah.
Maybe even also.
Yeah, okay. Does, do others agree?
Maybe they deserve just that mention.
Yep.
That these are utilities which serve South Burlington.
Yeah, and, and again, does it belong in the energy section or not? The fact that, you know, increased development and increased um, increased use of electricity in existing resources is a headline issue.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you know, well, may not be right now, but it will be at some point because, you know, we're not developing the capacity as quickly as we're developing the loads.
I would suggest that if in this chapter it be considered as sort of the utility side of it.
Yep.
And then in another chapter, in the energy chapter, we talk about uh, generation. We talk about uh, policy associated with willing to electricity and things like that. But if here we can think about it as the lines that might help us to focus our, what, what we're trying to say about, you know, redundancy of electricity and um, undergrounding. And you know, should we have a policy, for example, in city center about where transformers go, like that sort of more utility level?
Energy storage. It's not really an issue that's ever been discussed in the comprehensive plan before, but it's gonna become a significant issue very soon. Um, the other thing is, and this is not in the next ten years, but probably the next twenty. Um, and that is um, work, let me call it. And that's, it's really micro grids.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, local generation, not of renewable type, but a combination of things which involves storage, uh, potentially, you know, small hydrogen or nuclear, which is gonna be happening.
Yeah, I think.
In the next twenty years.
I think that would lie a little more soundly in the energy chapter where then the utilities chapter is more like how, how do we match up our, our land use planning with the, you know, capacity of the transmission lines?
My grids, my grids, I think are much more location dependent though.
Okay, well, why don't we take a look at that? Um, the one I would add to your list, Donna, would be also, um, I am not aware that Velco or GMP have additional plans for substations, but that's a fairly substantial land use when those happen. So maybe we can get an update from them as whether they have any ideas of an area of the city that they're thinking of. Because that on the utility side is a fairly significant.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And, oh, sorry, and just, and while currently um, GMP provides the bulk of the street lighting, um, I don't know where that falls, where that issue goes. Is it transportation?
Probably more so. Probably.
Transportation because, you know, as we're, we've been talking about lighting, pedestrian and bike, bikeways.
Yep, I think that that was my, when you were saying that, that was my gut is that sort of, it is utility, it is energy, but it is, I think, the purpose of the lighting is for safe
For transport.
Transportation, so that's where I would end up.
But as you were talking about sewer and water infrastructure.
Yep.
Serving where you want development.
Yep.
Electricity in that same level is a concern because if we want to develop here, but there is the infrastructure to support the loads.
Yep.
Um, so in that, in that respect, it fits here.
Yep, I would agree with that.
I think what I think Paul was maybe getting at is some of the like, the resiliency needs of the distribution system. Like if we're relying on it for heat and lights and refrigeration in our cars.
Yeah.
Then I think we need to make sure our network is like
Yeah, there's a
It must not.
Yeah, and there's an interesting line between um, like the lines from here to there in South Burlington feels like it squarely fits in this. But do you start talking about, you know, the regional grid and all these other sort of capacity issues? Does that go into the energy? It's something we'll have to sort out, but yeah, thanks for pointing that out for sure.
Anything else on the ener- electricity before we? Okay, then I think we can get back into what's actually in the draft, yeah.
Oh, I, I mean, things that are not in the draft are as, as helpful to me as like things you've commented on that are in the draft.
One thing that stands out to me regarding uh, solid waste hauling.
Yep.
And it's mentioned under climate resilient and it's mentioned again uh, under CSWD. And talk about the city of Burlington, uh, in South Burlington completed a feasibility study.
Yep.
Um, but there's been no implementation of that. I can say that in our neighborhood, there were five refuse trucks that were coming into our neighborhood every week.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotten it down to one. So we basically have every, everybody in our community agreed to use one hauler. We did it by making a talking to everybody and then contacting the haulers and getting pricing and seeing what they would do for us.
Mm-hmm.
And in terms of our whole energy structure and what's going on in residences, I think eliminating, we, we still have three to five to seven propane trucks coming into the community every week, et cetera, et cetera. And that is, to me, that's a big planning issue and it relates to the energy issue as well as the traffic and congestion and et cetera.
You think that this, what you've seen so far in here makes sufficient reference to that? So that is not at all, to my knowledge, in the twenty sixteen plan. So this is the first plan that is referencing this idea of consolidating. So there was a study done, the next step is, are, we've, we would advocate that it be in the plan, that this is the thing we want to do and then do it.
So my, my comment was much less polite than yours.
Hang on, let's, I'll just say, under waste hauling,
Mm-hmm.
you mentioned that this study was done, but there's no follow-up about, we want to see that implemented. And I think that, I think that rather than just saying we did the study, we need to say, we need to push this forward.
Yeah, and that's a little bit of a um, plan structure question. Um, we've been going back and forth on it a little bit about, do you have all the analysis in the narrative? And then the conclusions are the objectives, sort of the bullet points.
Yep.
Or do you make that, do you make, you make the conclusion statement as you go? And how is that structured, so?
But either way, if the commission agrees that that should be a forceful statement,
Yep.
we'll make that note.
Yeah.
Well.
As such.
So.
It says remove redundancy in solid waste hauling. Is that not strong enough for what you're suggesting?
Um.
Remember, there's another layer of actual strategies that would be built later that would say, you know, take action through our authority under CSWD to, you know, to, you know.
From page to page.
To allocate.
I can just go on my con follow you.
He's driving the pages today.
Page one, you're on page one, right?
Yes, where would you like me to go? I'm just.
Stay there until everybody's finished with it.
But that's, that's what Jessica was referring.
I think, I think he is talking about that. We've got that one
Yeah.
kind of small statement there, and I think there's discussion about if that's a strong enough one.
Yeah, Laurie, was your point that it's in the bullet point, but then isn't in the narrative?
Yeah.
And you would want it in, but is, is that policy, is that statement?
It is in the narrative on the second page. I think that's, um, could it say, remove redundancy in solid waste hauling and uh, fuel deliveries? Because fuel deliveries have as serious redundancy as um, as waste hauling. And again, in our community, we have done group buying
Yep.
with the, with it, with the propane.
Yeah.
And have the propane trucks.
Sure, so my suggestion would be, if you, if the commission wants to put that at the objective level, absolutely.
Okay.
When we get to the strategy level, the tools are gonna have to be very different because we have authority today related to solid waste.
Yeah.
The fuel dealers are totally unregulated for lots, so the how to do it becomes a completely different toolbox, but identifying the problem that we want to fix. Sure, I mean, absolutely, that's what the objectives are for.
Okay, and is it related to the, this topic?
Yes.
Yes, go, go right ahead.
Uh, Laurie, who did you end up deciding then for? For your solid? The solid rate waste, we ended up with Myers. With Myers? Yeah. Um, there is a problem in all of this in that it is a strategy of Casella to act like they're a local and compete with the locals and put the locals out of business. And then turn out to be the large corporation that they are and raise everybody's rates astronomically when, once they control an area, that's, that's their business model.
Well, I, I do recollect that the study that was aforementioned concluded that Casella would be the ideal single point to do the whole city, and I think that raised a lot of hackles.
Yeah, the only thing they have going for them is that they use trucks that are running on um.
Well, they have one electric truck.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't have combined hauling trucks, but.
And this is going deeper into this.
Yeah, we're the wrong.
I don't think we should.
Coming from the audience?
Finish my points.
Oh, okay.
That was, that uh, instead of having what, uh, instead of writing what we plan to do and what we, sorry, what we planned to do and tried to do and failed to do into, in twenty twenty, we should write what we are going to do as a strategy. Uh, we should leave that whole sentence out because we didn't do it. So it's not relevant.
Are you?
On page two, in twenty twenty, the cities of Burlington and South Burlington completed a feasibility study, but we didn't do it, so why put it in here? We need to put in what we are going to do as, Laurie.
It's noting that we have an economic, uh, we have a study of the effect of doing a project like this and what the economics look like. We have some data to back it up if we make that decision. That's the point of including that study. It's not saying we studied it and then we failed to do it, it's we studied it, we just haven't done it yet.
Well.
And we have the data.
If I interpreted it that way, then whoever else is gonna read that might as well do so too. I think a good strategy is to say what it is we are going to do or, or what we are going to attempt to do,
Mm-hmm.
which is in the bullet points.
But we do need to back it up. We can't, I don't think the city plan can be a document of just, we will, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. It has to have a little bit behind it saying, we have some data, we've studied this, we've looked at the issue. We're not just pulling these, not necessarily this one.
You could say.
But we're not just pulling these policies out of thin air.
There may be many places where you could say we have data
Yeah.
to support this plan.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna print it all.
You could take care of Michael's concern by just saying, we did this study and moving forward, we look to, we look to figure out implementation.
Yeah.
Just have that.
Yeah.
So that it completes, so that it just completes it that we're hoping to incorporate that into the policy.
Yep.
Hoping is probably not enough.
Planning.
Planning to do it, okay. Um, the audience?
Uh, yeah, Ryan, um, I think, is it Paul?
Yeah.
Your comment about um, you know, one uh, company becoming hegemonic and kind of controlling the industry, that there are some concerns to that with rates and people who live here. And so it, there might be some other ways to look at managing, you know, it's also how we put that out to bid. Do we rent the city into districts and let different people compete for different areas? So that it's not just one city for everyone or that it's not some kind of long-term contract that gives them any kind of edge over, you know, citizens' pricing or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is something in, in that, that some of these carriers, haulers already only serve a certain area. So if the city was divided up into area and let, let these people bid for an area, then you would only get one.
So then, that is something that we, so they were at the sort of policy statements and then the objectives. The strategies that have not been drafted yet because they would be the action steps to make it to these goals is where something like that would, would come in, like uh, divide the city into districts, put it out, put each district out to RFP possibly. But it's also just city process.
Right, I, I would suggest, I think somewhere in between this is where we want to land. So maybe a little bit more detail of like, what the study highlighted as key issues
Yeah.
of equity, equity, costing, fairness, et cetera. And then say, you know, now we need to move it to action. This plan won't be able to lay out exactly how we do it. That's for the next, that's for the next stage of implementation, but there's lessons that the study can present to us, is what I would suggest.
Um, yeah, there's, there's one thing that I think I completely missed. And that is, um, I think it was a, a few weeks ago, um, the solid waste district um, announced that it hadn't reduced um, the amount of trash collected uh, according to its goals. I don't know what its goals were exactly, but it was a, they were hoping to reduce the amount of trash.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, they had not. And I think reduction in the amount of trash should be at least equal to meet um, CSWD's goals. You know, and it, it seems like, seems like that's a worthy thing to, to attempt.
There's, so our, our engineering group just did a report that wrote, like, did a summary of how solid waste is going in Vermont. And it's doing badly. I think we actually made the grade worse because there's some good goals, but we're not meeting them. They're like really ambitious goals, but you know, people are still buying stuff and throwing stuff away and not sorting and composting's complicated. And you know, we're just, we're not doing it.
People are buying even more.
And the regulations.
The, the one other thing that I had written down for this section, which relates to that is um, can we have an objective of, and I know this isn't something that the city per se has control over, but it's something that might have a place in the plan, trying to reduce or eliminate the plastic waste that is burgeoning, getting worse, you can't go to the store without, and some cities have, have implemented um, no single-use plastic ordinances and things like that. And I'm wondering if that can be brought into this because plastic waste is getting to be a huge problem.
Even without the bags.
Even without the, the bags were the smallest part of it.
Yeah, the bags, bags disappeared, but there's still a lot more.
But I, I don't know how on a city level I can be addressed, but I think it's a, a huge piece for our community. Um, not just for the landfills, but all over the roads and et cetera, et cetera. And the microplastics that are getting into our food stream and our water.
It struck me that um, by having such large trash bins, we're encouraging people to throw more away. And I know the city doesn't control the size of the trash bins, but it's like, really? I, you know, I'm trying to throw more stuff away, get rid of stuff in my house so I can somewhat get my bin filled up and get my money's worth.
Share with three other households.
Buy things just so that.
To tolerate them in.
No, no, they're already in my house, don't leave me, I don't have to buy.
A couple extra to sell.
I don't have to.
Fill up the bin a little more. Get a better value on the.
They just self-generate my house.
One other point of that is that the combination that these haulers have trucks that pick up both the trash and the recyclables, and they have them separate like in other cities that you know. Um, because in, in my case, then right now, we have Myers comes every week, every Tuesday for the regular trash, every second Thursday for the recycle, and every second week, another company comes for the compost. So we have three people, three, two of the trucks are heavy. Uh, the one that picks up the uh, the compostable stuff is, is a small van, but the others are heavy trucks. They do, they do a number on our roads, but it's also the, the amount of vehicle miles traveled that is doubled. So um, there is a, there, there was a company that offered the service, it was quite expensive. When I was on the board of our association, I investigated that. Um, but it was a lot more money and the board wouldn't go with it. It might have been Casella.
Myers does have the combined hauling.
Yeah, but they also charge extra.
Oh, well, depends.
We're getting a really good rate and that's what comes to our neighborhood.
Yeah.
They take both.
They take all the same truck, yeah.
It's kind of same, I think, I think.
Two compartments.
Yeah, I think it pays for the associations to, you know, cause that's the only reason I get a better rate is because the association, the condo associations kind of negotiate a better rate and they give a homeowner the same rate.
Yeah.
As long, you know, to pick up on the same days.
So Laurie, you, you had an interesting um, note a minute ago about the, um, an objective to try to eliminate or reduce plastic waste. Um, the uh, that's a really interesting idea and I'm trying to, or we're trying to figure out where to slot things. So when we, well, Kelsey and I have been trying to work on objectives, big picture. It's how do we have the fewest objectives that say the most? You know, I love, I've used this example a bunch of times, but the regional planning commission has an objective that ninety percent of development should be in ten percent of the land area. That says all sorts of things about walkability, natural resource conservation, transit efficiency. So you can capture in one measurable indicator, a whole bunch of things. So I, I always try to think like, how do I, is there a way to go, Kelsey describes this as going one step up on a statement so that we can have a measurable objective and have a, a manageable number that we could theoretically say we're pouring it on every year? I really like this and I'm not sure where to put it. But I, that's mostly just, I'm giving you my brain thought about
Mm-hmm.
where do we put these things that are automatically connected to other things, but are important? So I don't have an answer, I'm just sort of flagging that we're gonna noodle on, how do we do these things that are, so it doesn't get lost in a three hundred.
Two buckets, one is redundancy and trying to get rid of redundancy, and the other is reduction. And I'm not sure how you, so the
Waterborne environment.
The plant, the plastic issue is a reduction, how to get stuff out of the waste stream.
Right.
Whereas the trash hauling and all these other things are redundancy where we're getting duplicative services that are increasing environmental and, and other impacts.
So I'm totally in agreement on, on the piece and I'm just telling you where I'm noodling is, how do we have this not getting lost as a plan? So.
I will, I will.
No way.
And where would the city have jurisdiction to, to manage or control? I mean, I can see restaurants being a place where, you know, a lot of them sell, take out stuff in very heavy plastic stuff. The others use paper, some type, some pretty good stiff paper that you can chuck it in the microwave, even in an oven. So what areas would we be able to affect if we were to try to eliminate or induce plastic?
That would be, is a question for our legal department. It's, it's as Paul actually mentioned last meeting, the, the city only has the powers that uh, the state gives to it. So we'll have to figure out exactly where something like that may fit, cause different states run it differently, as, as noted. So what someone can do in, in a municipality can do in Maine may not be something that we can do here or vice versa.
I suspect that it's the kind of thing that is most likely what we would do along many of the climate action statements as promoting social change.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that it's likely that we will either be a regulatory entity or be able to, we can't really buy ourselves out of people not buying stuff, but um, but I think it's, you know, it doesn't mean it's not a good objective, it's just identifying how do we evolve.
Can we do it other, I'm not saying we can't, can we do what other communities have done by uh, not allowing single-use containers and that kind of stuff? Because I know we don't, we don't allow plastic bags.
Passed as a state law in Vermont now, is it not?
Was it just the bags or?
The bags, the bags passed as, as a state law, but single-use containers.
Yeah, you can still get like, you know, Chinese food or whatever, you know. It just isn't a plastic container.
Um, Paul, you wanna?
Well, just, uh, Paul, you said we have authority over the waste haulers.
As a member of this Chittenden Solid Waste District, they have some authority. That's identified, identified in that twenty twenty study that they could. So we could potentially do it through them. I wouldn't recommend that we become our own solid waste district, but there are a handful of towns that have done that. So that there is some, there is some regulatory authority related to solid waste management. In, at the, at the solid waste district level of which it's made up of a member community. And that's the hairy edge of my knowledge on that subject.
What's the direction for us to go anywhere?
Yeah, I think there's other things, but I don't know necessarily need in there, but like reducing litter, you know, it's a great thing and it's something we should be doing and we do Green Up Day, but I don't, you know, I don't know that we need an objective because we're doing some things already.
I guess my question.
Another type of thing maybe would fit super well.
Yeah, and, and for the same, for similar reasons too, because I'm wondering when you say reduce litter, is it reducing humans littering as a verb? Or is it reducing the amount of litter that's around? Like, is it a street sweeping situation, you know?
One means the other.
Yeah, oh, they're, they're absolutely connected, but when it's from the sort of, you know, or what, is it, is it reducing people doing it versus reducing the appearance of our, cleaning up what the streets look like? Or the, or the breaks or?
I don't know that it rises to the top of being a big objective, because I think we're doing some things already.
But Lori's point is to stop it at its source.
Sure.
The providence of these, of these single-use plastic containers.
Right, but also, but, but an objective could be um, maintain aesthetically pleasing and clean. You know, transportation system, like it could be something like, that's a little bit, it's a slightly different tact on the same thing as we our, our, our goal is to have a clean community. One of the things that would go into that is looking into options for reducing litter as it happens, reducing the existence, excuse me, of single-use plastics. But also, also looking into better street sweeping or, or whatever.
Interesting.
It depends what your vision, what the goal is that you're trying to meet. Um, and all of those things would lead into that same, like, the purpose being a clean street, so when you're walking as a pedestrian, which things you maybe don't see in a car, you see much more as a pedestrian or bicyclist, like having things be more attractive and more, you know, that could be.
But it's an environmental issue to, a health issue, because these plastics don't don't degrade very easily. They remain in the, in the landfills for ages. Um, and they get into the, certainly the smaller micro, microplastics getting to the water supply system and into the oceans and all the rest of them. So it's a long chain, but if we could cut it off at the, at its source.
Yep.
That's, that's the strategy we should try to adopt.
But the root of so many of these issues that we are going to be grappling with in this plan is behavioral. And how can a plan influence integral changes in our community to reach the objectives that, that we're striving for and, and that's a tall order.
Yeah, I mean, I, my gut reaction is there's, there's two big things. One is making it really easy for people to do it.
Yeah.
So maybe that's the combined, you know, truck hauling, maybe, you know, something that makes it really easy to, to change your behavior. The other is, um, as we've talked about in other sections, building community. If you feel more responsible to your neighbor, you're less likely to throw your empty, you know, single-use soda bottle on their lawn, you know, if it's, if you feel more connected to your, your community and more, more, more invested in South Burlington as a place and as a, as an entity and as a, as a as a pile of humans instead of just a geographic area. Psychology would, would dictate that you would be less likely to um, do some, some of these negative things.
Build healthy competition into it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a third one too, and it has to do with competition and that is, you know, encourage industries that use recycled plastics. It's an expensive thing, everybody knows, but who's doing it? You know, it's like, it's not happening enough.
Yeah, I mean, I think this connects to a certain extent back to last week's conversation. When you were talking and Paul gave a little bit of a discussion about the updating our governance structure, which, you know, is both about uh, the elected officials, but it may be exploring things like what Burlington has of the neighborhood planning assemblies, which connects directly into the building a sense of community, because then you could start to bring new ideas at a much more household level that isn't just, you know, we're not a big city, but it's still, we're, we're still a relatively large city. Things can get done at the Queen City Park neighborhood level much more easily than citywide. How do we foster more of that to, you know, pride in community, therefore pride in all the things that, that we're talking about, so. Yeah, great.
Okay, anything else on solid waste? I guess, just something that came up during the discussion. You know, I know we talked about, and um, electricity as a utility. We currently have propane trucks and natural gas as another type of utility. It may, may not be one we want to encourage in the future, I don't know, but it does exist and is a utility, so it feels like.
Yeah, Michael mentioned VGS when you.
Oh, yeah, you did, oh, you did, yeah. So it feels like that at least
is really.
deserves acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Some people, like, I get it through the street and other people are getting the trucks. I mean, it's.
Yep.
And we want those people that are getting it from trucks to skip over the pipe to the electric.
And, and maybe that's a reasonable first, you know.
The best example of, of that is, is Africa, which went from nothing to mobile phones and they left out the whole landline infrastructure. They didn't have to build it.
Well, did you have your?
Yeah, I just uh, I wondered why solid waste and telecommunications were discussed together. But uh, the reason is because this is underground infrastructure then, right? Telecommunications.
It's that they are um, utility style or utility level services that are not completely controlled by South Burlington. So, so, so that's why, that's why solid waste was in there. Um, and telecommunications is in there, it is, it's private entities. Um, there's overlays of, of regulators, you know, federal regulation and all sorts of other things, but it's um, in my mind, provision of an essential service, which rise, rises to the level of utility. In the same way that people used to think of, you know, Bell or whoever, New England Telephone, way back.
In the second last paragraph on page two, under the telecommunications. We say areas with service, there are often only a single provider, which can lead to high consumer cost and limited, limited choice.
Yeah.
Uh, I would put a comma, limited choice in that, and poor service.
Okay, yeah.
Because it has been dismal having only one carrier.
Yeah.
Yeah, then identifying the problems, but it doesn't give us a plan.
That's gonna go in the solution section.
You want one?
What?
Well.
No, we haven't gotten to the solutions.
I, 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 I'm, I'm.
Yes.
I see.
That is a specific area where there can be solutions though.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the, interestingly, the Chamberlain neighborhood is the first neighborhood that is having Burlington Telecom coming in, and this is one of those sort of odd circumstances where older neighborhoods are easier to serve because the lines are all above ground. So that's where, plus it's physically adjacent to Burlington, so competition is on its way for future development. I think we maybe referenced it in here, if not, it could go into the objectives that we could put together and we did it for Market Street. Because that's the street we built, but you, you could um, have a uh, uh, public works specs about the amount of conduit that goes into new streets to foster more than just what is the, the one of each.
Yeah.
You know, and then ultimately we own that typically, I mean, not in every case, but so there are things that we could develop over time to encourage the competition. And then of course, you know, be welcoming and seek grant opportunities. We've joined recently the city council, joined the Chittenden telecommunications district. Um, which gains access potentially to some of the infrastructure money for underserved areas. We don't have a ton of underserved areas in South Burlington, but we don't have, but it's not serious. So. For telecoms, he's actively moving to come in.
Which geographically makes sense in the same way that Chamberlain does.
Yeah, I, I took a carbon given.
Yeah, it's um, some of what Paul is referring to is the very first thing on the third page.
Yeah.
Under that first strategy, sufficient space to allow them, allow for, allow for multiple carriers.
When you say space, you mean?
Physical space, yeah.
Okay.
I think you.
Physical space or even like a cell tower. You can, you can put multiple providers on a single cell tower, but they have to be designed in a certain way um, to provide for that space instead of having a Verizon tower and a AT&amp;T tower and whoever tower all sort of taking up separate structures.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole other mode of telecommunications too that goes on utility poles and streetlights. And, you know, we never planned into that when we started retrofitting lights, which is unfortunate because there's all kinds of additional services like metering for electric vehicle charging. That can be done that way. But you have to, you have to, you have to put the right infrastructure.
Strategy we could think about including would be maybe something along the lines of being nimble to new technology as well. So we had on Dorset Street, uh, one of the telecommunications providers. In fact, they, they did do it, but they said, we can basically replace one of your light poles. It'll look exactly the same and we'll put we'll put cell, cell equipment in it and we'll pay you rent. So, you know, our council was in favor of that. There's no policy behind that, but you know, who knows what the next version of that is gonna be. Um, and maybe, maybe that becomes a, a strategy of being nimble to meet our objectives through new ways and it may not be pipe at all. You know, the next broadband technology at some point may just not even have fiber.
Yeah, security, you know, because security is one of the biggest ones. A lot of cities are using their streetlights. Um, their street lighting infrastructure, adding cameras to that. And then the, the backbone is there because the backbone is the electric wires that can also carry um, information. It's.
I have a, uh, organizational question. Just, which just came to, to my attention and telecommunications section
Yeah.
has strategies.
Yeah.
Has two strategies.
They don't all.
It's the only one that has strategies.
Right.
Uh, you got a preview into Paul's brain dump.
Yeah.
So I said, hey, I don't want to lose these. Um, why don't I just stick in the draft? That's not where we normally are at. It just happened to be this Friday when I did my last review, I said, let me not lose this thought.
Those two in particular were statements that were made in some form in the narrative draft that I wrote. And Paul went, those aren't narrative draft, that's strategies and popped them out.
So I just, we, we've sort of deferred strategies as we've gone along.
Yes.
Talking about sections and the strategy simultaneously is helpful.
Yep.
Okay.
So I just, it was like, oh yeah, we're talking strategies. I thought we were putting it off.
We are, we are putting it off and there's, there's one.
So we'll have a strategy session at some.
Yes, so that's part of that second round when everything, when all these sections will come back around.
Perfect.
Um, the idea is that the first time we see it, it's some of these, do you agree with the policies? Like, do you agree with the general direction of, of certain things, you know? If you had said, no, I love having five trash trucks in my neighborhood every week. That's the sort of level of, you know, that it was like, okay, I wrote this incorrectly. I need to shift it. How we um, write some of these action steps that go towards the policies um, is something that we will circle back to partially because I am going to be looking um, for more input from our professional departments like DPW in this case. Um, to inform a little bit more, because it does get a little more technical when you get to that level.
Can you scroll up a little bit to the bottom of page two? So that last paragraph on page two, maintaining a high level of service, blah, blah, blah. Then talks about the sighting of telecommunications. So like, is this strong enough language to like, give input to the P, the PUC process? Like when a cell tower comes and we want to like, say we don't like it? Is the sighting of, it should consider issues of aesthetic, safety and efficiency?
Do you, like, would you want to say that sentence in a more, instead of should consider these things, it's, you know, must be aesthetically pleasing, must be safe.
Because this is, this is the only place that we, I guess, I guess part of my question is like, as part of the PUC process. I think they look back at our comp plan, at our guidance, or is that only for solar sightings? Or does it also happen for like cell towers?
They, um, so they don't look to our rules or, or to our plan. They, but they would take feedback from us if we actively wrote a letter based in our policies. So it sort of comes, let's say you all or the city council in three years' time want to write a letter of concern. The more that you have that based in something of an adopted policy, the more that that is something that isn't just, you know, what seven people think, it's an adopted policy in the city. So yes, a stronger statement, you know, understanding it's not control, it's still just a, a slightly stronger statement would serve you well.
And the telecommunications is, is somewhat different from solar because there's a pretty significant federal overlay on the, on like cell towers in particular. That there is less control over some of the sighting um, at the state or local level for telecommunications than there is for solar. So it's, it's important. I, I think that's a good point, um, but just noting that there's a little bit less you can do.
Well, maybe we just need to be fed up if people agree that the aesthetics matter and the fact that it's an existing utility area rather than a new development area.
Or just, or just change, should, shall.
Aesthetics, but the um, flexibility of what's being done. So if it's, if it's a tower, uh, as Kelsey was saying, if it's a tower that can be used for one cell service as opposed to a tower that could be used for three cell services. Making sure that that flexibility is incorporated as well.
And encouraging the use of existing structures as opposed to building new structures.
Anything else on telecommunications? I guess we're on to stormwater. And did you, was um, did the stormwater people at the city look at this already?
No. No, I, um, I've talked to them and I got some initial um, sort of very, very initial feedback from them. This is an updated version from the previous plan and there are, he, I did get some sort of line-by-line edits about, you know, terms that aren't really used very much anymore, you know, some of that sort of language, um, but not, not this draft as such.
Just a question about the impaired streams. What, what impairs the stream? Is it?
Jessica, you don't want to take this one?
Yeah.
Yes, so.
This is just Jessica's professional expertise, so.
They actually be, what's impaired due to water quality and the impairment can be from different sources. Our particular ones, all of these are stormwater impaired.
Right.
Um, you know, there's some that are temperature impaired or have heavy metals or, or have other types of pollutants that are impairing them. But our particular ones are stormwater. And um, they actually go in and test the biota in the streams. And if the streams aren't supporting the, the micro, macro vertebrates and fish that they're supposed to, then they're considered to be impaired. And there's actions that need to be done to you know, make them less impaired. In our case, it's stormwater treatments. So the state does that. State does the assessment.
Okay.
And the classification.
When you say stormwater treatment, what do you mean?
So like in our case, we had to come up with a plan in, in the city to um, So like in our case, we had to come up with a plan in in the city to um. Figure out areas of like impervious surfaces, like parking lots and other impervious surfaces that aren't currently treated. Where the stormwater hits them and goes right into the streams. So those areas had to be identified and. You know, captured. So the city has like a pretty amazing team of people who are like actively working to get grants and. Get land and put in systems and actually do those stormwater treatments.
Ponds and four bays and things like that, which you have up up just behind the Cairns Arena, for example.
Well, yeah.
It's a treatment facility.
We we had quite a quite an experience with our with our ponds, which are aesthetic ponds and also stormwater ponds and.
Yeah, so they're.
We learned the hard way, do not take the low bidder. Do not take the low bidder. That should be a rule of thumb for. I mean, they, I mean, they still haven't fixed it. The middle pond leaks.
The big thing that the city does in this is. We cut, we are a landowner in just about every neighborhood because we own the streets. And as such, we can. Um, when a neighborhood either has a state requirement with a three acre or it's we've just identified that it needs to get done as part of our overall plan. We can go to that neighborhood, whether they're an association or in in some cases there is no association and we work to bring them all together. To both bring the expertise, the leveraging grants and then the the city portion of it to make it a viable. Project to get it done. Whereas without our utility, a place like Butler Farms, there's no association there. How would two hundred residents ever with no structure to them solve issues? So that's like the big thing that they are that they are able to do and it's really.
It's it's really good. Most cities don't have that.
Well, and it's also the the professional expertise is very helpful for the city to bring that in because I think that was one of the problems that. The village in Dorset Park ended up because they hired their own engineer and God knows who this guy was, but.
Who who's there to verify, right? So we we often hire consultants, but then we have people who can. You know, talk the talk back and forth. So just that I might have in here is we talk in here about the MS four, which is our federal. Um, permit. It talks about a deadline of twenty thirty four. That will be just after the completion of this plan. So maybe given that we're within essentially that last ten years, we can have our stormwater utility say a few words as to where we're at in that and. If we need to ramp up or if we're right on target to to make reference to that.
Yeah.
Might be a good opportunity there.
And Francis, did we answer your question or did you have anything else?
So there's like specific things that we need to remove.
The pollutants that are carried in the stormwater and that's what they're doing with putting in the ponds and the gravel wetlands and the. Chasing the.
Things like chloride, phosphorus. Hmm, I'm not sure what else.
I guess the thing I'm thinking about is is so if they're in runoff, is there a way to keep them out of the runoff?
Soil.
First, like maybe if they're caused by fertilizers or. Herbicides or something like that, is there a way to prevent them from getting on lawns that get into the water?
Yeah, so there's a bunch of educational um programs out there to like, like, don't pee on your lawn, like basically don't put your fertilizer in. Pick up your pet waste. Um, also, the um. The you've probably seen signs around that's it's called raise your blade.
Oh, yeah.
About keeping your lawn mower blade higher so that the grass does more filtering. Um, you get better root systems in the plant. So I mean, there are some things that are more like educational that can keep people.
And then on the um, on the commercial side of educational, our stormwater utility has been trying to work with. Several of the large properties on, for example, the amount of salting they do in winter. Um, which is a tricky thing because, you know, obviously they want their homes to be. Safe, but some properties really oversalt. And so trying to work on the education side from experts to, you know, the contractors that are hired to do that. But um, I don't know if we talk about much of that in here. I know that those programs exist, but maybe there's an opportunity to talk about. Reduction, yeah. Um, some of it, we don't have a. Apparently there's a study committee. No, no, that's for that's for basis B. We don't currently have authority to regulate pesticides per se in the city. Though what we do with planning and developments is we we have the ability to do that as. In subdivisions and PUDs through the developer view process that it's a condition of their approval that they not apply them. But we don't have a overall authority to just say, you know, on your individual, single family lot property. You can't do it because it sort of falls under agriculture in Vermont and it's a messy area.
Um, I was looking at uh at this stormwater and others uh to see whether. And how we can meet your objective of a hundred pages or less. And I think there's stuff in here that we we could cut out. That I I think unless there's some legal or regulatory reason for having them in, one of them is the third. Um, after stormwater, the third paragraph in stormwater. Uh, which um starts with story is generally married managed on a property by property basis. I think that paragraph could go. And the one that Paul just pointed to. Um, there's a lot of information there, but is it useful? And city residents and businesses share the costs. I think that could be um. Stated somewhere else um. More more concisely. There's a, that's a lot of information that. Um, certainly I don't need. As a, if I step back as a resident, I'm looking at this plan, I love, you know, that's kind of a bit wonky. You know the word wonky? Um. So there are quite a few places and that and those were the two paragraphs that I thought were su- could be superfluous in. In um the stormwater section and cut it from a page and a half to a half a page. Totally.
I think that's really, that's good feedback, Michael. I would probably want to keep this part that I've highlighted, talking about how our progress on the MS four. Because if we're behind and the statement needs to be, you know, we need to ramp up and, you know. Quadruple, I'm not saying we do, but we have to quadruple stormwater fees. That's a pretty substantial policy direction of the city. But I agree with getting rid of a lot of the superfluous stuff.
Well, maybe we could say that we're behind and.
Well, I'm not saying we are. I'm saying we should add, we should ask stormwater where we're at because we both got ten more years.
That probably it could be said in one sentence.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
And and then when we get, so those were the two things that I thought were superfluous. There are a few other things that I can. Do that offline. I don't want to waste your time on it now.
Anything else on stormwater?
I got one other piece on stormwater um. Relating to to property owners. I I don't know if anybody's familiar with the the backyard national parks movement. But if fifty if fifty percent of the lawns and people's backyards were turned into um. Taken out of lawn and put into plants and pollinators, it would be the largest national park in America. And it would have a huge impact on stormwater and pollution. Um. Whether something like that could be put into policy saying um reduction of of lawn sizes to. Promote the health of our natural environment. Um. You can't tell homeowners what to do, but but it could be uh something that's incorporated into this concept of. If it was done in in South Burlington, it would be the largest park in South Burlington. It would be the biggest contribution to restoration of natural areas.
There are.
That's a great point.
Few few uh residents along rural parkway who have done it.
Oh, I know, but I the idea, I mean, I had the thought of just the idea of just half your lawn.
Right. There is a um. Uh, the Climate Action Plan has a action right along those lines. I think it's called thirty by thirty. Thirty percent of lawn area returned to a natural area by twenty thirty. And I think that's another national sort of similar campaign and it's referenced in the Climate Action Plan, so we can connect those dots.
Yeah.
Is there legislation right now about that? At the state level? I saw something about thirty by thirty.
Burlington has a thirty by thirty program.
Now, the state's talking about it too.
It it is that. I.
It's the federal thirty by thirty, you know, it's thirty percent of uh land and thirty percent of. Uh, ocean and thirty percent of lakes. The federal covers everything. Um, and I think the state, the representatives are talking about land only thirty percent.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I I think you're right. I think it was like conserved land, thirty percent of Vermont will be conserved.
Well, along that, along that same line, um. Because this is one of the things that bothered me a little bit about when they did the stormwater ponds at Village Dorset Park, they cut down trees. They cut down substantial number of trees when they around the perimeter, you know, that were absorbing water. And I just think that there should be some guidelines that says, no, you want to plant willow trees. You want to plant the edges of these of these stormwater ponds, um, because it's just helping them to function better.
It wasn't on the berm? Was it on the dam itself or?
It wasn't on the dam, but it was around the perimeters. They, you know, that was the, that was the recommendation that this engineer came up with was to basically sculpt. All of the, you know, banks. One of the contractors said, well, you don't need to do that where you have trees already holding the banks. But the contractor came in and took everything out. It it was. It was just appalling, you know, how they treated that, you know, because they didn't have to do the whole thing.
I'm not sure that that's it should be, but I I sat on an on a stormwater advisory committee down in. And um years ago at the A and R. To develop best best practices and I, I don't think that was in there, but it should be.
It should be in there, yeah, because.
Something that you want, I don't think we could do anything about it, but uh as your natural resources. Could do something about.
It is actually a part of the stormwater manual to retain trees and to plant trees is.
Well, certainly for, I know that's required for controlling temperature, for example, keeping cool. But um, I didn't, well, maybe since then, this is like. Seven, eight, nine years ago.
Yeah, the two thousand seventeen manual has tree planting as part of the stormwater.
Well, the reason they didn't retain the trees is because the low bidder basically said, no, take everything out. It's less money.
Should go low bidder down.
I didn't, I don't think we picked the low bidder. I think the city in the uh city was incumbent in combination with the um, the people in the association did.
Okay, we ready to move on to the potable water, drinking water? Oh, we have a question?
I have two questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Laurie, was your statement about the laws, um, was that geared toward existing laws and finding. Strategies to reclaim or was it geared towards future subdivision law creation and? And how that interplays with PUDs or some form of?
It was geared towards existing, existing laws, the the laws in the United States are. Compared to, what is it, time of the biggest national parks put together? So, but it would, it would play for for new development as well.
Thank you. And then, Michael, your your comment about that third paragraph under stormwater runoff that you weren't, you didn't think it held a lot of information. Um, I do really like the example of reduced pavement widths um as a way of diminishing impermeable surface. And if this is something that interests the rest of the planning commission.
Which which section?
Um, stormwater runoff, you mentioned, I think it was the third paragraph. I think I thought that was the paragraph you referenced.
Which page you were?
Middle of page three.
I have different page numbers than you guys, so.
Here, thi- this is the paragraph Michael's referring to. The city has encouraged to require stormwater installation while some stormwater techniques support compact development. E.G.
Yeah.
Reduced pavement widths, others may be contradictory, such as leaving large open space on properties.
And so um. What I'm asking about is it's like a that sense of goals of not just. Having a future development changes with narrower roadways, but something that. Puts a responsibility on the city to look for when there's any work being done in existing neighborhoods. To evaluate the amount of asphalt in those areas so that it could potentially be taken back or. Um, you know, it does fit into transportation because we talk about how wide some of the corners are, even in residential neighborhoods. That cars can actually go pretty fast around them or cul-de-sacs, like one behind my house that takes four plow passes to clear. But it's a cul-de-sac. It could be one way, you know, like ten foot wide strip for cars, so much extra impermeable space there. Um, but just for your consideration, think about ways wording could help slowly take those away going into the future with with policies.
Yeah, Burlington did um in some of the hills areas, uh, they've put a lot of rain gardens in along the streets. Yeah, you know, for that reason.
Yeah.
They they had to cut out her runoff.
Then um total, do we need to call potable water?
No, that's just what it was called last time.
As both drinking water?
Drinking water.
Drinking water, water. I don't know.
I mean, I guess.
International term is. Never worked before.
Yeah, we don't say it that way, even if we do say it.
Well, it's, we use it, we drink it, but we use other stuff too.
It's drinkable water.
We can eat, we can call potable. Can't say it as nicely.
I'll look up, I'll look up a synonym for potable.
I won't be a complainer. Anything in here?
So the big one, just for you to be aware of, is that the, we have a low service area and a high service area, meaning like. One tank is higher up than the other ones. The one that is uh. Next to the golf course off Dorset Street is at ninety eight percent of its. Uh, at it, at its of its capacity, meaning like, uh, you know, there's always water coming in, but in order to have sufficient pressure. There's a capacity amount with it. So we are actively uh moving towards previous plans talked about exploring different sites. Um, we've identified that the best site is immediately next to this one. So that's a a big capital project to be coming.
That's actually in the.
Yeah, I'm just highlighting it for folks because that's, that's a big, that's our next big capital project. Um, in prior plans, there was a possibility of it being. By the Auclair property where there's sort of a knoll on top of the hill. Um.
Heinsbruck Road Chiefs Factory Road.
It's the highest point up there.
Um, that was removed in part by the planning commission in twenty sixteen and in part. You know, evaluating to Kelsey's point at the beginning of the meeting here about aligning our. Infrastructure objectives with our uh with our land use policy. Putting it there would be, you know, very visually present. We didn't own the land and the. It would have the opportunity to make a little bit more area of the city. Using water because it's even higher up, but the cost of doing it up there, the cost of separating it from the other because you can't, you sort of average and. The land use policy of very little actually happening over there led us to say that's not a logical location. The impact of doing that, though, is that there are some areas like the north end of Highland Terrace and a few other areas that are. Um, do not currently have the ability to have um public water because of their height. And probably won't in the future. So a a land use policy that will need to connect back to that decision. Is I think we're hoping to be able to have a map showing areas that. Because of elevation really can't be served by water, which means that they likely can't be at six, seven, eight units an acre. It doesn't mean that there can't be any development, but it wouldn't be based in infrastructure. So I'm just connecting the dots on this. That this is not an active conversation. We've really connected in prior plans and we want to do it a little better.
Just just a question, just down from where you are up there. It says no suitable location has been identified.
We should update that. A suitable location has been identified.
So that comes out, right?
Yeah.
That's just what you were talking about, that you couldn't find something elsewhere in the city.
One paragraph of the last.
Your last sentence in that one, you're almost there, right there.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that comes out, that needs to be changed.
That'll be updated.
A suitable location has been identified, even, I have the number of word letters, the first word.
Look, Michael, we can cut a letter.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, guys.
We'll cut out that.
Producing one letter.
But also a very important policy statement that uh that we might have missed, so thank you for catching.
Just out of out of curiosity, um if more infill housing started to be built in some neighborhoods, would that become a priority area then to upgrade the existing sewer system, sewer and water?
It probably depends on the current state of that, so we have some neighborhoods that are much, much older than others, so.
Those would logically be the ones that probably.
Well, I'm saying, like hypothetically, which the, yes, yes and no. Um, there are neighborhoods that were built in the forties, fifties that are are how are possible locations for infill, there are also neighborhoods that were built in like the seventies or eighties that would also be candidates for infill, so um it may depend on on some, because logically speaking, you would, you would assume that the older neighborhoods have more degraded sewer systems, um but it's possible that that's not the case, and I haven't had that conversation with our um public works.
Are you speaking about um the, 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 what state they're in or their capacity or both?
Both, because, you know, if if there's going to be additional housing in that neighborhood, then it's sort of, it seems like it would prioritize the um upgrading of the of the capacities.
I think we should have, we should talk with um utilities and and how, they have done some capacity studies in various areas, I know for example that the eastern part of Williston Road, there's a pump station that is getting fairly close to its capacity to move wastewater, so it's not necessarily the pipes, but it's the pump station because it has to go uphill. So in order to facilitate more of Tech Park and the future phases of O'Brien, uh that will likely need to be upgraded, that kind of thing. I think that's what, I think we're saying the same thing, you you spoke neighborhoods as being commercial, but it's the same issue.
Yeah, and you're talking about wastewater, not, not drinking water?
Well, it could be either one, you know, whatever systems are degraded.
Yeah.
Can we go back to?
Yep.
See what, is there anything there that we can delete, like, do we need all the information about who, how much water is stored in the West Tanks? The capacity of the West Tanks and the East Tanks is ninety-eight percent capacity. And then start again at new development.
Pull back, tank that needs to be replaced, I think is the thing we want to see needs to be replaced.
There's a lot of uh.
Yeah, so there is, there is an element of um inventory in this section that isn't in some of the other sections, um, this is it, this surprisingly, surprisingly is cut down a bit from the previous, from the twenty sixteen. Um, I kept most of this as um because the existence and condition of the water system is not as common knowledge as other topics may be, that more background would be useful. Um but I, there are definitely sentences that I can go back through and cut individual sentences.
Is it useful, what is it useful for and who would it be useful to? The, the, the statistics, yeah, the.
Well, let's say, you know, I, using a simple one, if we're at ninety capacity, ninety percent capacity in the West Tanks, we need to be capital, we, the plan needs to say, should be saying, we need to start planning.
I agreed that that needs to be left in, that you need a replacement for that because of, because of the capacity constraints, but there's a lot of other stuff in there that uh about what happened in the nineteen forties through the nineteen sixties and so on and.
Well, I guess that paragraph, that paragraph could be two sentences, it could say si- substantial portions of the distribution piping infrastructure are beginning to reach replacement age and then skip right to continued efforts to replace old and underside side pipes are important for the continued reliability of the provision of blah blah blah, so, like, it's, it's true, like, that whole thing could just be too.
And I think we could maybe streamline it to an action statement connected to it, which is, you know, or the analysis of that maybe, and I'm speculating here. Maybe the city needs to prepare for a greater uh capital investment as these reach a hundred years, like, that's, that's a plan statement of, we need to be ready that those things can, replacing old system, when you got to do it, the cost goes up dramatically, so we should be prepared as.
And I th- I think the second piece of those, it's replacing the whole of systems, maybe on a street by street basis, but also um, there's a significant effort for the public works to respond to water main breaks that happen more and more often the older system gets, which are time consuming.
And our strategy, though, maybe not spelled out in here, is we would like our public works department has tried really hard to be in front of this, so we're, we're not reaching that age, just like with roads. Because if you're at that point, you're way behind the ball, and unfortunately, there's cities all over the country that are way behind the ball, but investing in it now. But maybe that's the statement needs to be made of, it's not just statements for fact states, it's statements for policy.
Yeah, so that, and then I think re- really related to that is something that wouldn't have been in there the last go-round is, you know, all the talk about the wrong pipes, so there's the, the service line um inventories that are supposed to be happening, I don't know where we're at with that. But like the line, the water line that goes from the street into your house is sometimes made of lead or other really bad materials, so somebody is supposed to be going around trying to figure out where their lead, so then a plan could be put in place.
Good, we have a water engineer on here.
Mine, or that PFAS stuff, so, I mean, there, I think there's a lot of like water contaminant stuff that's been in the news a lot.
Not to mention the stuff that's collecting inside the pipes. I've heard that stuff's pretty gross.
Um, and, and is it, do we need in this um document, in this plan, to have, to know that we set aside fifty thousand gallons for city center, is it?
I think that's critical, please, because that's.
The, the subsequent sentence is critical that we need to um update it and and monitor it regularly.
Sure, whether it's fifty thousand or not, I think a policy statement of, as a priority area, the city ordinances should reserve sufficient capacity, I don't know that we need the fifty thousand referenced, but that's, why should council have an ordinance that reserves capacity? To me, that's, that's a, that's bread and butter of what a comprehensive plan should be laying out, is that as a strategy um that uh.
We need this water.
That, that we want to prioritize the water, the wastewater go to the area that we are.
That's part of what we were talking about earlier, about the provision of utilities and resources to meet and match our land use priority goals. So instead of allocating that water to go, who knows where, making sure that it's in our water ordinance, that it's prioritized to come where we are already prioritizing dense land use.
Can that be added to our, our list? Can you scroll back up to the, the objectives? Because I don't think that these water goals are adequately in there. What you just said about the land use, that's not in there.
Okay, so something like, as an objective, I don't know, I have to frame it differently, but basically um have utility policy reinforce land use calls basically and support.
And then I think we need one that's more general about like actually providing safe, reliable, healthy utilities, I mean, like, so you're not getting polluted water from your lead lines and you're not getting disrupted service all the time from the pipes bursting and like, there's no thing in here that's kind of like general about, like, actually providing those services.
Reliability qualities.
Okay.
I have another, another logistic question.
Yeah.
Um, when I've been reading this, I haven't been reading it to try and figure out what to cut out and all that stuff.
Right.
I've been just trying to read it for content of what we want to make sure is in it.
Yeah.
Michael's been saying, we're going to figure out how to, should we be doing most of those? Do you want us to be very, talking about what we think isn't necessary, or do you want us to be, is that a later step?
Truly superfluous or redundant, maybe.
The, the priority discussion at this point is the policy statements. Do you agree with the policy statements that are made, do you disagree, do you think something else should be included or not included, but as Michael noted, if you run across a paragraph and you're like, well, this is completely, this doesn't support anything, it's just for fluff, for fluff sake, let me know.
Okay.
Um, but you don't necessarily need to be reading it to, yeah, it's sort of a different lens.
Okay.
Yep.
Kelsey, Kelsey is already, is, is actively pursuing that, but if you see areas that it said, boy, this, you know.
This doesn't need to be.
This is too fluffy in here, you know, we don't need the word by word, but you do tell us, please. Do tell us where we're being too fluffy.
Yep, one thing that I haven't seen here is anything regarding the efficient use of water by buildings and facilities. And um I wondered if anybody had ever done a survey of like how many homes and businesses have, you know, have like toilets and plumbing, um, you know, faucets and things that are like pre nineteen ninety, which would have not been low flow.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, sometimes can use twice as much water, and all of that goes into energy use.
Yep.
You know, for, you know.
Hot water and all these things.
Well, and sewage and.
Yep.
At a, at a macro level, I can tell you, Donna, that looking at the sew, the sewer volume data at a citywide or the two-plans basis, the increase in new development is not matched by an increase in wastewater, so we're seeing.
It's good, better plumbing.
Right, so there's a clear, like, you know, the, the, the extent by, the extent to which sewer usage is going up is much more slow than new development, so I know that's not an inventory, but it is a data that new development is doing substantially. And I don't know if the water department reaches, has a way of reaching out to individuals really high users or not.
Well, and it was, it was one of the things that came up with the whole idea of, you know, creating duplexes instead of single family doing, you know, add-on apartments and stuff like that, and, you know, for places that don't have septic systems or for places with septic systems, it's a critical issue, because the state A and R just will not let you add a bathroom. You know, if you are following all the regulations. And it, you know, my suggestion had been, and this was a different forum, but that, you know, there should be credit given for new plumbing fixtures that reduce the capacity or reduce the production of of sewer water.
Right, if you, if you have the, if you have the usage of water in, in one bathroom, you would effectively be able to have another one.
You can actually do two bathrooms with the same water as one, if you just have more efficient plumbing fixtures. So, you know, it's just like, so some, some I don't know if that belongs here, it might be too much of a detail, but the idea of conservation of water being a part of the way you manage and
Right.
that you manage your water usage.
Yeah, I think this, this specific detail about um low-flow toilets or something, it doesn't, it wouldn't go to that level, but but conservation of water um at the individual or household or building level clearly accumulates across the city when you aggregate everything together and that affects how much we need in our water tanks and how much, you know, we need in our pump station capacity and all.
And I think, I heard somebody mention this at one point, about even like restructuring the um, the fees for water usage, so that there'd be like, you know, the lowest you can pay for, I guess, is three hundred, three hundred cubic I was just looking at my water bill, comes out to three hundred and something.
Three hundred cubits.
Yeah, it's a different thing.
Whatever, I don't know what it come any, it was three hundred or something, and I said, but sometimes I used two hundred or less than two hundred. And I don't get a discount for using like substantially less water. And would that be a way of reducing people, giving people incentive to reduce their water consumption just by, you know, putting in better plumbing fixtures? I mean, it's sort of demand-side management on the water side, and it happens in the southwest in any place where there's significant water um, sure, you know, lack of water, but that it also benefits everybody, because it just it, it just costs so much less when you have less, um, less sewage capacity to process.
There is um a base uh that we all pay to water. Um, that's actually higher than most of us ever use.
Right.
So there's no incentive whatsoever to conserve water.
Well, that's just, that's what I'm asking, should we, in the next ten years, kind of figure out a way to incentivize conservation of water?
Not when they're making as much money as they are.
Who's making the money?
All kinds of ways, you know, so consumes instead of.
Water districts making the money, right?
Yeah.
Um, I have, I have two things on this section, one is um there's a paragraph in here that talks about needing to provide so it's on page six, the paragraph under inventory.
Are we in wastewater now?
Yeah, wastewater. Capital planning for upgrades to treatment plants and sewer system needs to be made equitably.
Mm-hmm.
Then goes on to talk about, like, how in the world do you propose something like that would possibly happen, like, you know, every bathroom is like connected to the pipes, like like, what am I missing?
No, it's, it's more like, it's sort of related to a comment, I forget if we made it before, about where sewer system upgrades are made, um, and making sure that is occurring in ways that benefit more the most people, so hypothetically, instead of uh, it's, there's a, there's a part of Spear Street that doesn't have sewer right now. Instead of spending the money to extend sewer on that part of Spear Street, that would affect five fairly high-priced homes, you can spend the same amount of money to upgrade the water and sewer in a very large chunk of the Orchard's neighborhood or the Chamberlain neighborhood, so make, doing your capital planning in a way that um does more good for more people.
Right, I guess my point, I, no, my point is that unless it's failing like the person who lives in the apartment near the new sewer line
Mm-hmm.
isn't getting anything different, like, like like, how is it, if you're just maintaining the functional system, like, I guess I'm just not totally convinced that this is a thing that's real.
My experience is that they get upgraded when they break, not before.
Yeah, I don't know that we would choose to
Mm-hmm.
give rich people better pipes in the road.
They currently don't have any pipes in the road, where I'm talking about.
I mean, maybe this shouldn't apply to expansions, I'm, I, it doesn't say expansions or, it, it just says upgrades, so. It feels like a weird thing, like, I'm all for equity, but it feels like
A weird place to talk about.
Forcing a weird equity thing on the sewer pipes.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a response off the top of my head.
I just don't want to have a disingenuous statement here, it like doesn't make sense in like the physical, physical pipes, like, that we're talking about, I, I mean, if there is something that I'm missing.
Yeah, I.
As a general comment, I think every time that you, you know, bring up equity, if you don't say you have an example of it, it comes off as disingenuous, I think. You know, because honestly, I read, I read the equity thing and I'm like, please give me an example here, because I can't.
This paragraph is thinking, is trying to specifically do, but in this conversation, what pops into my mind is if we had two neighborhoods side by side and one had the homes fifty feet apart and one of them had the homes three hundred feet apart, the responsibility long-term for maintaining three hundred feet of pipe versus fifty feet of pipe is a capital cost to the city. And so it's, I'm not sure equity is necessarily the word I'm thinking of, but there is a sort of cost effectiveness of being thoughtful of like, just because somebody would like to have you know, an eight-hundred-foot sewer going to their house, that doesn't ma- mean it's the best interest of all the wait payers together.
Well, then maybe you say, make cost-effectively as opposed to equity.
The second, the second sentence in this paragraph, I think.
I think if the first sentence was gone, the second sentence really covers, it's talking about private developers. You know, if I want to put in a private development that has eight hundred foot pipes. I have to make sure that, or we have to make sure that that person is paying for. The impact that it's gonna have to the whole system.
Or we say, you're welcome to do it, but it has to stay private. You know, we're not gonna take on eight hundred feet of pipe, just like we would take on three miles of road for a pipe for. But that's not included.
I.
Investment by the tax base.
It feels like maybe just keep the second.
But the second sentence, I mean, it sounds like what this is talking about is having the expenses apportioned to the people that are using it. So if I were to put in a development that has houses way far away from each other, et cetera, et cetera, I'm gonna pay a different. A different amount and I, you have to make sure that what I'm doing is gonna be covered long term. But I can't just do it and then walk away and all of a sudden it's the city's responsibility.
I think the thing that's not mentioned in here, you have it in the water pipe section. But we don't talk here about our sewer pipes getting old and needing replacement on an ongoing basis. Likely case, so maybe that first sentence is really not about equity, it's really just about like. Planning for upgrades in all those systems that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um upgrades benefit everybody, so you can't. Upgrades on the, on the plant, treatment plants benefit everybody. You can't just, you can't say, well, it's upgraded in a way that benefits.
Just the poor people.
Yeah, so I, that needs to be cleaned up, because I think. That whole paragraph. Further down, you, there's an area where we talk about. Places where it's very limited housing, like along Spear Street.
Can you give me a, a page?
It's on page six, near the bottom.
Next to the last paragraph.
Sewer lines planned for this area, uh sorry. Should be strictly.
Yeah.
Limited reserved for only.
Yeah.
Well, we could say should be strictly limited so that other areas then would get priority.
Mm hmm.
So this paragraph um is intended to lay the foundation essentially for. Having a more robust sewer. Ordinance that talks about areas that we intend to serve and not serve and under what circumstances. Is it achieving that to what you're describing? What's, what's missing?
Well, the first part of it, we, we should change because upgrades to the treatment plants can't be done in a, can't be done equitably.
I think you've just, just this paragraph.
Right, I'm on to what you're talking about now.
Anybody?
I'm on to what you're now speaking about.
Well, I thought we could use that. Um. Uh that mechanism, if you like. To steer the, to steer up upgrades of the system, not the treatment plants away from. There are areas where there's, there's, there's very uh with, with. What's the opposite of dense?
Spars?
Low density.
Low density, away from low density areas.
Extremely loaded.
Extremely loaded, as like the example you gave, I said five or six. Large properties along the western side of Spear Street.
Mm hmm.
I don't know how to do that, but you could, you could develop the language perhaps.
Right, I think maybe a stronger, what I'm hearing as a general statement is, again, back to what we said at the beginning, of a stronger link between the land use policy of the city.
Yep.
And the infrastructure. So if an area happens to have. A couple of homes, but it is our intent to be intently intensely developed. Like somewhere off Shelburne Road, that's one thing versus an area that is, has. Is not served, will not really have any more development, that's our land use policy. We don't want to necessarily extend. Sewer inefficiently out to somewhere where we have no intent of growing.
Where, where R ones are, for example. That's very sparse, we did, sparse we do.
So I had a question about this section also. Um I know these aren't the LDRs and we're not.
Yep.
Doing that, but um it talks about the designated habit habitat blocks and conservation districts.
Yeah.
Uh areas planned for only extremely low density residential use and. It just raised the question for me is. Why are they being developed at all? And certainly deciding not to let sewer go there is one way to help restrict.
Hey, Joe, you on?
I'm at the bottom of the six, the same.
Or.
Yeah.
So conservation, so habitat blocks and conservation districts and.
Or currently unserved, yeah.
So you're saying, you're saying, why doesn't it say currently unserved areas should be no density at all?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
Right.
It says we're currently unserved areas that are planned only for extremely low density residential use and. Well, I wonder why we're. We're not, but the whole idea of doing really low density development at all is sort of. A problem with our current environmental issues.
We have to load the land. So for, for example, so in the um. In the NRP zones, there's some people who have a whole property that's all in NRP and give them the allowance to have at least one home on the land. That they, like, that's still something that's allowed, or if it's a really big property, three homes, so that we're not. Totally taking away their whole property and saying, no, we can't do anything. So. I think that's why there's some, there's some very low density development allowed.
I want to take it with durability.
So what I would suggest.
Be gentle.
Right, what I would say suggest is. If in the end, this plan includes a policy along the line of what Jessica's saying, that there could be some extremely low density. Then this gives direction as to what to do about sewer.
Yeah.
If in the end, the plan decides to say there shall not be any really low density, then we should take this out.
Yeah.
But this is a statement about what to do in the event that we allow it.
Yeah.
But yes, you know, we, that's, that's the sewing together at the end, and if in the end, you know, the city's recommendation is to have no. Further extremely low density in any way, shape or form, then that becomes a redundant report.
That, I, that's why I brought it up, and then also on the next page, it talks about um. Uh onsite septic systems, which speaks to the same issue then, and uh. And I know the septic systems have been used in the past to. Force low density development, but. It almost feels like if we're not gonna put sewer systems there because we don't want them developed, why are we allowing to do?
I'm not sure that we have the authority to prohibit. If we allow for a house. We have, the state have to, right, we don't necessarily have to allow the house, but. Um this is about the, what is the form of wastewater treatment.
Yes.
But your point is understood.
On the last paragraph on page six, I think we should, we might. And because planning for sewer service areas also presents an opportunity. I think it should be presents opportunities. To direct development to areas of the city designated for dense residential development. And for thoughtful coordinated efforts, et cetera, et cetera. Because that's a tool we could use.
I think that's the previous paragraph. I think that's, I think that previous paragraph just needs to be written better, but like, I think that's what. That's what that whole thing is about, that where he's, uh, right, isn't that about being a tool.
It's written in the negative, but it can be also written in the positive. It can. And maybe this whole section.
Directing to capacity where we want high density versus directing not allowing it where we. Want.
Right.
Yeah, okay, you're right, it's, it's, it's.
It's the inverse, yeah.
This city, it talks about city center as a positive and then areas where it's not, but it doesn't generally say have capacity. Support capacity to exist where we want development and not have it where we don't want it.
Yeah.
This one, I think, is intended to talk about, you know, um we, we share with Colchester, they share our wastewater treatment facility. It is in our regional best interest to make sure that we have a good, that they're doing well too. Because it's the same water that.
But we're planning for sewer service areas which we do not have right now. Which is why I added that.
What?
We don't have a sewer sewer service area.
Right.
Planning for sewers, for a sewer sewer service area. It would give us the tool to direct.
Okay, I think we're saying the same.
If we had one.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing. What I'm saying is align any future capital planning, which can be a super sewer service area to our land use objectives.
That would be an ordinance.
Right.
The sewer service area would be an ordinance.
Yep.
Not a capital plan.
Both. Yes, 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 we're saying the same thing.
No, there's a capital to do it. To do what? No, you just take what Paul does with his mapping, he takes a, 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 what is it, a sharpie, like somebody else we know. And outlines where the sewer sewer service area is, I mean.
Yes, you're right, it is, it is regulations in addition to capital plan.
Yeah.
Um Princess?
Just one thing. Uh up there you say, the third paragraph up, it says the city set aside a hundred fifty thousand gallons.
Yep.
But on the previous page, you said only fifty thousand.
Yeah.
There's a disconnect between water provision and what wastewater.
Oh, this is wastewater?
Yeah.
So.
There is a currently a disconnect in the, in the two ordinances that needs to be.
Needs to be fixed.
All the more reason to make sure that we're aligning it because, yes, that is.
And in the, I, I had a comment on that, first of all, I thought we could dispense with it, but if we're gonna leave it in, then we should. Say what we said about water, that we need to provide for the build out.
Mm hmm.
Um which is what we calculate, was calculated at four hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day.
Well, you can actually, that's actually, that's actually the point I was gonna bring up. Um CSOs, we don't have any mention of combined sewer, or do we not have any? Are we done?
We, we have been very fortunate, we, to my knowledge, never had it.
I thought there was one we had that we got rid of like a couple of years ago.
Okay, if we did, it was like a really rare circumstance.
It was shared, I think it was shared with Burlington, maybe?
Oh, possibly in the.
Or maybe they, we took on, is that what we took on?
No.
No, no.
Burlington was processed, it is.
Right, it wasn't a combined sewer service, it was that the Paul's neighborhood, the Eastwood neighborhood went to Burlington.
And now it's going to Arlington.
Then we brought it back.
We brought him so that lower rates and um.
Boston Bay.
Right, we brought it over, all that sewer now goes to Arlington, gotta go to Burlington. Lower rates for the folks there, lower cost to the overall tech, great players and. Burlington has a combined sewer overload, so taking a little bit of pressure off their plant. Has an overall environmental benefit because there's less going into it for now. So it wasn't directly lost, but it.
We helped with their CSO.
Um I have a question on that last paragraph on the next page, which was. Uh the capacity of the Winuski River to receive effluent and remain under. Underwater, underwater quality standards. I, I think we need to say something about which remain in compliance. With, and what are those water quality standards? Who sets them? Are they state?
Yeah.
It's.
So remain in compliance with X, Y, Z water standards.
Faces?
Yeah, I just said, so if because of climate change that the Winuski River water flow goes down. You're not gonna be able to put as much wastewater. No, that impacts me.
I don't know that they're saying we're gonna get less water, we might just get it different.
Different.
Quantities at different times, but.
It's a real low, real low flow in the summertime, how's gonna impact the treatment systems that go into it?
Not my harvest expertise, but my guess, friend, is that at such time as our plants are up for renewal. And they, and they do all of the permitting to demonstrate that we're gonna be below threshold. If there was an external factor like lower or higher um uh. Water levels that would have to be accounted for and, and solved. So maybe. If we can talk with our public works folks about whether this is a, a, a concern or not, but I would put it under the subject area of risk.
Yeah.
A future risk is that climate change may impact our. You know, what, what the practices and or the physical treatment in future repermiting, something like that.
Mm hmm.
And I, I think with us discharging to the Winuski, it's a lot less of an issue than a lot of small towns, like towns that. Discharge into a smaller river where the percent of the flow is much closer to the actual stream flow itself, so you've got like.
Like the Laclede River.
Little flat, I know Heinsberg with their lagoons are like more of a problem.
Yeah, and this was actually a pot of water. I don't know what Donna said to make. Question this, but I didn't notice anything about water storage. And when we have certain very large uses that cover a lot of land and there's lots of runoff. Maybe we mitigate that with a retention college, but there are also a lot of properties that irrigate for lawn. And going back to um another previous comment today, and so when we look at uses like. Particularly golf courses, um but also in LDR where we have large properties that might. Still have the capacity to build, is there any thought about, or hasn't been any thought about requiring? I don't, I don't say sister, but you know, like roof collection of water to be used for. Those purposes where we don't need treated chlorinated water, such as irrigation, if. A new building is going in or if there's a retrofit to something like. A golf course building or, or such. Has any, has that ever been discussed before?
You're talking about repurposing water instead of letting, letting it go into the stormwater system. Um redirecting it to uses.
Sometimes it goes to the stormwater, sometimes it, you know, on a big development, it might go into a retention pond, which is.
Yeah.
A particular land use, right, and we're consuming that land for a certain thing, but um. There's also a lot of. Properties that water their grass. And we know, you know, golf courses definitely do that, that's an easy one to pick out, but in a lot of really large lot, large home neighborhoods. People tend to water their grass, so it stays green all summer, and they also have very large roof areas. And so their gutter drains to either the driveway and therefore the stormwater system or the backyard. But I don't know if there's been any thought about for. Roos of a certain area or in certain zoning areas where uses like golf courses, the requirement. To capture the rainwater that falls and repurpose it into their irrigation purposes to the extent that it satisfies those.
But you, you'd have to incentivize that.
Well.
And I've been through this with the stormwater facility because I took the trouble to connect my downspouts. With infiltration lines, and so the rainwater that comes off my roof. Goes into the ground, doesn't go anywhere else. Um and so I asked, well, okay, I'm paying. So it happens. By fluke that my development where I live pays the highest stormwater fee of anywhere in, in the city. Because we have quite a few roads. Um and the answer was, well, I said, I'm, 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 I'm removing X square feet of impervious surface, why don't you? Why don't you take account of that? I didn't get anywhere, but that's one of the ways that one could do or, or get people to do what you're suggesting, is to give them an incentive.
Was, so I haven't seen that in any worlds, but one place I have seen something similar is a lot of rural communities require fire protection. So if you're gonna build a little neighborhood and it's not on a municipal line where. You know, there's city provided fire protection, they have to put in a fire pond. And capture runoff, have the fire pump connection lines and like that water's. There to be used for that purpose, so.
And a related thing, it doesn't exactly answer your question, Ryan, but am I correct that the new um stormwater manual. Strongly prefers onsite infiltration. So it's not, it's not reuse, but it is, it's like, don't send it away, get it to soak back in where, where it.
And like a lot of individuals are doing, it's like we have a rain barrel at our house and use it for watering our indoor plants and our outdoor plants at home, so like we don't. That's all we use for like our one little teeny, I mean, our lawn's like the size of this table, I think, but.
And and we have a rain rain barrel uh that sends the water, the rainwater into the swimming pool. So there way, and that that is a very big roof area because it's a clubhouse, so it collects a lot of water that goes into the pool.
It does it soak in.
Okay, are we uh?
Paul, you were.
No, good.
What did you just reference? You said the.
I mean, so.
Um.
So the state stormwater manual for new development.
Just got a free.
Mm-hmm.
Um has has reinforced that the practices should, the the tools that are used to treat rainwater should be infiltrating onsite wherever possible as the first priority. It's not exactly reuse, but it is like, don't send it off into a pipe that goes somewhere else, like try to soak it in where we're.
Try to judge parking lot as an example, they have a they have a rain garden.
Yeah, and so I'm wondering, so that document, does that? Um how toothy is that and it do we have to have things out?
Pretty toothy, it's 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 the rule that apply, I mean, you've just been to a Jessica, but it's.
It's the it's the rules for any any new storm, any new development that has more than a half acre of impervious surface. Any expansion, um any existing site that already has three acres of impervious surface needs to go back and do that, and then our rules reference it and also have um. You know, kind of.
Is that Act sixty four?
It's what?
Is that Act sixty four, this new stormwater stuff that's.
Um.
In effect in twenty twenty six.
So a lot of it's already gone into effect. And it is, it's already in use for all the operational, like if you are gonna develop something and you need a permit for stormwater, it already applies, yeah.
So in hypothetical that a golf course clubhouse does an addition or enough percentage of rebuild. They would be listening to. Close by as opposed to a side catchment area like a retention pond.
As the first. Try to do that first, right, like that's the.
I think you can use cisterns though, I think cisterns and rain barrels are an allowed use, I I don't allow stormwater practice.
Yeah, um I guess maybe my question, maybe I I started that wording wrong, but I'm. I'm wondering about that as a long-term solution and the exploration of the use of those. In certain situations where we know that there will be lots of use of potable water for non-drinking purposes. Um where we can replace the nice clean. Um high energy water that we drink with, shower with, and rather use catched water towards things like watering lawns or things like that.
The the technical term about is gray water, is that right? So water that has been treated, it may not be exactly potable, but to use it for things that fresh water would be used for again.
Um it no, because I'd be like when you wash your hands, and that's a separate thing, but like the literal rain that falls on impervious surfaces like a house. That has a gutter system or a building that has a gutter system and directing that towards things like. That irrigation system that a place might install, because even if you infiltrate, you know, fifteen feet away from the house's foundation. People with very large lots or golf courses may have extensive irrigation systems that go well beyond where that water will actually drift to. Um and they're drawn, they may be drawing water from the city's.
Yeah.
Clean water supply.
A lot of a lot of agricultural places already do this, so a lot of the farms in the area, like you know, like Horsefords in Charwat. Like does exactly what you're talking about, they like capturing water, they hold it until they're ready to like use it on their lawn, so it is a practice.
Note that I made to myself in here was when Donna was speaking about conservation of water in local and various things, I made a a note to say. Take one step up from that and talk about a policy of conserving. Um rainwater. Uh treated water essentially, and the more that you conserve that, then somebody who chooses to. Irrigate might choose an option of using rainwater to do it, so that's kind of where I was thinking, like, how how do we take a step up?
Yeah.
Not at the specific solution, but at the the objective, and the objective might be to, you know, treat less water for. U- use fewer resources of water going through our pipes to overall.
If it's cheaper for me to use the water on my roof, I'll do it, so how do we structure it so that water's cheaper for me to use than the water that comes out of my pipe?
Yeah, that's a lot better for your plant.
There you go.
Water coming out of the plant, the pipe is not.
So are we ready to move on to the economy section? I think that's where we are, so Paul moved on down. Anything on economy?
So as a one sentence of introduction here, um the last plan, you know, took a stab at it, it was largely. You know, there wasn't a lot of policy debate that went into it, this is an area that we think. We would love to get as, you know, what kind of direction are we trying to head in with it? Uh we definitely are getting on the development committee, spend some time with it. We haven't historically had a substantial economic sort of strategy. So this is a little bit looser than some of the other sections, so broad feedback to that would be very welcome.
Sorry, did you say the economic development committee has not had a stab at this yet or it haven't?
No, I'm saying we're gonna ask them to spend more time with it, if they, I assume that they've already given some broad.
They have, they have provided some pretty detailed comments, um this is a sort of difference from committee to committee, some provide sort of general thoughts and some provide pretty detailed thoughts. Um so this does reflect um some some pretty specific recommendations from the economic development committee, they haven't seen this draft as written.
Hmm.
Um but a lot of content has made it from their recommendations into this draft.
And broadly speaking, a lot of this is fairly new compared with the last plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
So statements and we're we're trying to sort of capture a lot of what you've been talking about of. Uh support business near existing development, which is a climate objective.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, the previous plan had more um of the inventory stuff and and a lot less of affirmative forward-looking policy.
And has a lot of sections which you cover elsewhere.
Yeah.
I I only had, well, I didn't look too much at the preamble, but in under the city center, I noticed the sentence that. Uh says we did not have a downtown core with professional employment opportunities in a walkable area with services, retailers, restaurants. And housing and I, you know, that's kind of a statement of of historical fact. Wouldn't it be better that we just say that the city plans to provide? Um. That we. Provide professional employment opportunities in a walkable area rather than that we we didn't have one before. That would be a more like a plan.
Went forward thinking once.
Can I offer a middle ground on that to say that?
No, there's no middle ground.
It's always a middle ground, I mean, I think that as an analysis statement, there are very few professional jobs in our current city center.
You're not, you don't have a professional job?
That's why I said very few, but you know, if we look in this greater area, there are very few.
It does. Hey.
There there's retail employment, there's hospitality employment, there's.
Yeah. There's the whole blue mall.
But that's all retail.
There are no professionals there?
I guess I would hesitate on that.
There's that, isn't there a lawyer in that one building next to the.
Well, right, maybe professional is the wrong word, this is sort of best of time.
Well, we could leave that, we could say um employment opportunities in a walkable, you know, leave out professional.
Exactly.
Hmm.
But is that the middle ground you will have?
Well, but.
Hmm.
I was trying to say that as we think about this trying to be a twenty-four seven area. Um one of the things that's missing is that there are not. There's retail jobs and service jobs, there's very few um. Office jobs in this area, which is not, it's it's a gap in the overall structure of this area, it it will be, you know, if you only have retail.
But the vision for city center was eventually that you would have doctors and dentists and lawyers and.
Right.
All kinds of things here.
Paul's saying it's missing.
I, right, so I'm saying in analysis, it's missing and we want to proactively get there.
Well, I'm I agree with you, I'm saying we shouldn't say what that we don't have it or we never had it, we should say we planned to have it, to have it.
I mean, I think my opinion on that is that.
The city plans to provide those and instead of describing them all again, those opportunities as service.
My opinion is that the necessity of providing a place for those things to be established and thrive has to grow out of the fact that we don't have it already. If Burlington said we need to grow a professional core with doctors and lawyers and accountants and people will be like, you what?
You already have it.
Yeah, so so you have to make the statement that it doesn't currently exist, yeah.
Well, in at least in order to put special emphasis on it, you know, our current form-based code is totally neutral.
Yeah. Yep.
On non-residential, do we want to be trying to fill a gap that is is presently there?
Right.
You know, do we wanna, you know, years ago, we had an opportunity for CCB to locate here, they went in Winuski, we put a bid in. You know, do we want to?
It occurred to me.
I think we're all saying the same thing, it's just backed up by.
Yeah.
But I agree, it's we shouldn't be speaking from the past.
Well, if if you want to um be able to attain that kind of, I mean, we don't talk at all about live live work environments. And you know, on Spear Street, when when those big houses went up along Spear Street.
Really?
One of those houses, it was desired that, you know, it was a it was either a doctor's or dentist's office or something like that. Wanted to buy that really big house that sat on the market forever and ever, it's a beautiful place, but the city wouldn't allow them to have a doctor's office there because they said they didn't have enough parking.
Well, that's not an issue anymore, because they're on a minimum.
Well, that was, that really held up the sale of that house, so, but in terms of city center. It struck me that what is completely missing in what's being built is what I consider the Back Bay Boston model. Which is three and four-story buildings which are small footprint, you know, basically one entity, a professional. Um or a small office could own a, you know, downstairs office space. Uh and an upstairs living space, so that and it's like completely missing in South Burlington, I don't think there's any place where you can do that. You know, like.
Do it in city center.
Well, many of us do it in our own homes, I mean, it's, you know, I have an office in my home, many, many people are doing that. But we haven't allowed for anything like that in city center because everything has to be done on a huge lot and, you know, have multi-story. You know, have elevators for multi-story, well, a smaller sized lot could be a professional. Um you know, like a multi, multi-use space, but it's called a live, live work environment.
I. Yeah. Mostly agree with what you're saying, we allow it, but we don't do anything to.
Encourage.
Encourage it over the bigger, the bigger lot version of it.
Right, and now we don't, we have a little bit of land left, so we could still do a little bit of it.
We don't own it.
Hmm.
But we don't own it.
But we could encourage.
Yeah.
Um Paul?
I think people had a um, I mean, I know when we wrote the form-based code for city center. That we had a pretty clear vision of what we wanted city center to look like, and uh we made that vision known at the time. And I think that a lot of people think that that's what city center is gonna look like, and I think they feel betrayed because it doesn't look like that.
Yeah.
It looks like backstories, you know, and uh so I'd like to see us have something in the uh in the cap plan. That would clearly articulate that vision of what we all really expect city center to look like, we really would like it to look like a downtown of a city, really, you know.
Village center.
Or a village center, you know, I mean, I mean, my ideal is to have something that's brick storefronts, you know, that looks like St. Albans or Middlebury or someplace, you know, I mean, it would fit in.
Bristol.
Yeah, would fit in with all the rest of the towns and cities, it's just that would be built in the twenty-first century instead of the nineteenth century, you know.
I mean, I was told by Lana, she could, because I said, well, this would be really nice to be able to have, you know, to be able to buy a smaller lot here. And you know, that a professional person could build a smaller building here, and she said, well, that's not gonna happen, you know, just because of who owns the land.
Right.
And you know, it's like they're not willing to subdivide it so that more people could have smaller buildings, you know.
Well, we, you know, in Bristol, like the cover, the pizza bakery, and there's two other things I've never actually gone.
So pop on the other side.
The bikes on the outside, there's like, there's four businesses, we all think of them as totally different businesses, they're all in the same building.
Same building, yeah, they're just, they're just basically storefronts in one building.
I mean, it would be extraordinary if we could build um a city in downtown that looked like two hundred years ago, I mean, that would be incredible. And to have the technology that we have now to have net zero for buildings, I mean, it would be, you know, that would be a tourist attraction for them, uh to see something like that, you know. That'd be an exciting kind of thing to do.
Well, what I would say, Donna, to your point of the smaller scale stuff, I think there's a huge opportunity for us to think when we get to the land use section of this plan. To talk about the San Remo Drive area and how we wanna see that rebuilt, because that is much smaller individual properties. Here, we have a couple of very large landowners, convincing them to wanna divide up is a way, is 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 very difficult, but. The scenario over there and on parts of Williston Road are very different, where there are much smaller pieces to, you know, maybe.
Promote that kind of development.
To promote that. And that's all part of the city center, not Market Street, but it's part of the city center.
Unfortunately, they don't back up to a park, which the landed city center does.
Some of them do.
Yeah.
San Remo does, don't really.
Or at least, at least, you know.
It's very close.
One, one corner of it does.
I thought you were gonna say something entirely different about what's being built here as an architect. Six buildings that look the same.
Oh, I walked by, I was, I walked by them today and I walked by them today, you know, before the meeting, before I went to the library and I. I looked at them, I said, you know, somebody did a pretty good job making these very, very similar looking buildings. Actually, different materials and look a little bit different, so I don't complain about them.
They all look like twenty-first century buildings.
I think the other thing to note is that what, just the development pattern that has happened is the buildings that were built first happen to be the ones that don't have first floor commercial space. And the ones that are built, being permitted and then built sort of now-ish into the future are the ones that will have that first floor small, smaller unit commercial space that you just don't see yet.
With hopefully a higher floor for on the ground floor.
Right, so the T five has a higher minimum than the T four does.
Yeah.
So the T five is this block, like this building here has a higher.
Yes. It's more like, yeah. Others, um, yeah.
Is one is a, that's tied on what Donna was saying, um and. It's very difficult for builders to afford to make something tall on a small lot.
Oh, I know.
An elevator.
Elevators.
Why these five over ones are really popular and ubiquitous right now in this time period. Um but I I think back to Paul's comment about the original vision for city center is that, you know. The Bupst body at some point will need to look, relook at the form-based codes and look at why they didn't produce the results we're looking for. And then look at cities that do achieve that, like any new building in Amsterdam, you they develop whole blocks at a time. And yet it looks like individual buildings that have been put in uh over a hundred years ago, and they achieve that through a different metric instituted in those design standards. And that would be stuff to be looking at, um updating after the plan, whether you put that as an intention of yours to do. Uh or not is, I don't know, but um once this all gets approved, that might be your next project.
We looked at some of the European uh cities and uh um one thing we liked a lot was uh the cities that have um. Streets that are, you know, brick streets.
Curbs.
With no curbs and the cars and bikes and pedestrians are all in the street together, you know. And I mean, that's quite a different model than the, you know, the zip from Heinsberg Road over to Doris Street.
Yeah, they were also, you know, the 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 dreams or visions of those who sat in the workshops to talk about it. You know, one would would have liked to have had a s- a central square, small. Um and to make it look like the Gazebo in it, maybe something like that, but that that was their sense of of uh what it might look like. And definitely commercial on on the ground, a a street level for every building, which we don't have.
So I mean, I'd really like to point this out in the in the cap plan, I think it's, you know, we certainly can provide a direction to the city or. City center particularly, I think through the cap plan, so I hope we do. I have one other thing I want to comment on this section about too. I have one other thing I want to comment on this section about too. And that is the airport and the Chamberlain neighborhood. Well, I think if you leave the section in, uh it's like the last paragraph or two.
Under airport.
Yeah. I have a comment. That. Language, um, I would not walk through the Chamberlain neighborhood after writing it, you know. It's not uh, it's not at all what you hear from the. They they've written, uh, you know, a plan in twenty sixteen. Uh, that's what they want, but they they really are very clear about not wanting any. You know, building by the airport around that or replacing any of those forty one or forty four acres. With anything other than, you know, affordable housing, really, so. That's uh. You know. They don't wanna hear any of that kind of stuff, you know, cooperation with the airport and stuff like that. That's just not.
I actually.
There's a lot of information about that and that that uh. Uh, that uh. Uh, the, when this, when the airport applied for uh zoning change and then we put together a task force and. You know, the discussion and task force was, I thought was incredible. And the task force was chaired by two people who were Chamberlain locals, you know, and uh. Uh, they spelled it out very clearly what, you know, was acceptable and what was not. And, you know, that uh, I don't, they would not find that acceptable. And they do wanna see their twenty sixteen. Plan uh as part of this year's camp plan because, you know, back in twenty sixteen, they. They missed the boat by two months or something like that. It's a little late getting in for the camp plan done. So uh, and they're pretty serious minded people about this. It's quite an amazing neighborhood.
Yeah, I actually made a note in the second paragraph under the into Burlington Airport. Um, the sentence that starts, this should utilize. This should include utilizing the airport and land around the airport. Um, sorry, around the airport Parkway for projects that benefit. And I struck out everything else and just said the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
And um.
Airport reliant business.
Yeah. That's what is needed. And then improve transportation is another issue, but the neighborhood is where what that open land that. Was taken away, if you like, from the neighborhood should benefit the neighborhood, not anybody else.
There's quite a bit in the twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen Chamberlain plan that talks about, as I recall. The. A relocated airport Parkway relatively close to the airport. That that can be a strong divider between the intent of the city, the intent of, or the the the. The being part of the neighborhood. Being, you know, areas like where the 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 fifteen, the, what's it called, the the cell phone lot. You know, that being for airport purposes, but that's really far away from the neighborhood and drawing a more clear line. That's all in there. Maybe we can draw on that a little bit more. Strongly.
That and the task force and the zoning change.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this section?
Um, I did just wanna draw your attention back to just up to the objectives here. A few things you've been talking about, but I wanted to note is, you know, this is a big policy shift. Is um, you know, evaluate existing business park areas for opportunities to integrate housing. That is a. Big shift from the past. Um, identify planned areas exclusively for businesses that must be located away from housing. So, you know, that might mean. That it's restricting long term, sort of really light in this, like, like office spaces like Gallagher Flynn. From being somewhere to reserve it to be only things that can be heavy truck traffic. You know, because every every time something goes in that doesn't really need to be there, that's one fewer parcel that's available for the things that do need to be there. Just wanted to flag those as, you know, we've been talking about this, but this will be the first time that it's conceived of in the plan.
So did industry, um, did the um. The industry um. Meeting, did they, did they actually come up with the idea of building housing and some, well, you know, making multi-use in in. Existing commercial areas?
What meeting are you talking?
Well, the, well, there would have been one of the conversations.
There's not. Yeah.
Conversations about the economy.
Yes.
So did they come up with that idea of putting housing in industrial areas?
It was a topic that was discussed. It wasn't something that they came up with on on their own, like independently. It's a topic that's been sort of, it's been circulating for at least two years.
Well, because I I just kind of wondered, you know, whether or not, you know, some of these businesses, if that even would be a consideration.
So it is.
For them to build, you know. They need housing, you know, it's like let them build it, you know, where they can.
So we did have a request come in from a business that is located in that area for some version of most, their their version was mostly temporary. Housing for like onboarding new employees, um temporarily moving to the area, that kind of a thing. Um, that was discussed and it raised some of this issue about, is it temporary? Do we allow temporary housing? Does it have to be housing that is related to the business? Is it housing in general? So it sort of launched some of this conversation. So it's something that did come in from the business community. Um, with a a very narrow request from one, from one business owner, um but it is a generalized. Conversation that's being had about. Where is mixed use appropriate and to deal with some of our housing issues with, you know, there's a lot of the lots and, you know, Tech Park or Meadowlands that have a lot of open space.
Right.
Um, just because of how they were developed and how and the needs of commercial businesses being a certain sort of footprint of building.
And they're adjacent to residential.
And they're often adjacent to residential areas, the ones especially Tech Park are adjacent to some transit options and some other things. Um, so that's a discussion that has been um kind of circulating for those purposes. The flip side is what Paul mentioned is that there are um businesses that should be, should remain separated from mixed use, so.
And it's hard to define like which ones those are, but it strikes me that the crematorium over at Meadowlands is. You but you don't know it's there.
Right.
But, you know, I've heard people sort of.
Right, so the tricky thing is, if we allow housing to be in that area and then housing does go in, then there is no place to put the next crematorium.
Right.
So how do we make sure that we reserve some things that? We wanna have in our community. Um, it's it's a much more limited list than a hundred years ago. You know, a hundred years ago, there was a lot of things that you wouldn't wanna be near housing.
We don't have slaughterhouses.
Today, it's mostly things that bring in trucks twenty four seven.
That's obviously. Yeah, like you don't really wanna live next to FedEx.
No, as a matter of fact, I drove right by a whole area um in Florida that was just these massive, you know, like. Twenty acre buildings and I thought FedEx, but FedEx was only one of them. There was, there was like.
On a national scale, this giant building is tiny.
Six, I know, six or seven of these enormous, enormous buildings with like a hundred truck bays around them.
So we're getting pretty late here. Um, is there, it'd be nice to kind of wrap up. Is there any other kind of burning desires to talk about economy, Cory?
I have a little one on the second last bullet under the objectives. Um. I think it should have uh food service. I think it should have high tech businesses added to that.
A separate from green technology.
We'll talk about green technology, but green technology.
Yep.
Anyway, and. We're not gonna do it tonight, but the whole economy question raises a big issue about development and growth. And how much growth can we handle? Do we wanna handle? On a big scale, but that's a question we could get into at another time.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, Sue, you know, maybe we talk a lot about affordable housing, including affordable housing in residential projects. But. The way gentrification affects small businesses hasn't really been discussed much much at a societal level. And we have, especially in this area on the periphery of city center, we have a lot of really small businesses that either. Get by on a small footprints or low margins or ethnically owns. Um, or you might try to be tiny dentist office in a little house uh adjacent to the mall. And so as we look to have certain areas develop or be redeveloped into more profitable land spaces, oh ladder.
Yeah.
In in some more profitable uh land spaces and denser land uses and these tiny little. Homes that are now businesses or those strip malls like the Pomerolo Strip Mall right near Price Chopper. Um, with Marcus and the old European store. When we think about places like that, which are affordable for certain people to run businesses out of. And the possibility of making a space that is exclusive of them being able to run businesses. Um, and putting some thought to this plan of how we make sure that we can keep providing. Uh, small affordable spaces for the types of comp, commercial entities that don't have big margins. Or are run by marginalized people, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and how do we fit that into? Um, our ongoing efforts to develop at a higher density around these transit oriented areas. Something food for thought.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Great point, really difficult subject, but great point.
I I guess, because this actually came up at at a, at a, um. Political event where a woman really wanted to add an apartment onto her commercial building. And she wanted to know, can I do that in South Burlington? And I think right now the answer is no.
Um, most of our areas are mixed use. So right now, the.
It's a restaurant and I guess she had family that worked there. And she wanted to be able to house them on site and she said she was told that that could be done.
I mean, I don't know where the restaurant is. I can give an example.
I think it's on Will's, I think it's on Will's, some somewhere along Will's.
I can give an example, may- maybe at the east end, because that's not a residential area. Um, but I'll give an example of the building that owned, that hosts the post office on Shelburne Road. Um, they have just gone through the D R B to add six apartments to that building.
Really?
So, you know, that's, it's got the uh uh couple of restaurants and eye glass door. So that's an example, slightly larger example of the same thing you're talking about, and that was.
Are they gonna go up?
Uh, and they're going up a little bit, but mostly there's sort of some unused space in the back that was.
Where the car parts place was.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. So, you know. It's it's beginning to happen.
Yeah, I.
It was supposed to happen here. You know, small commercial spaces on the on the street level with residential.
It's, I mean, it's really hard to afford.
Shophouse.
It's the reason so many small businesses start in homes and in some cases they stay in homes for twenty some years, like going.
Okay, so, um. Let's move on to the schedule.
Yeah, so I just want, it's. I just wanted to provide a basic. Game plan moving forward um for when things, certain topics will be coming up, certain, when we're gonna be looking at the updates to things, um just.
I think Laurel Hill in there.
There was a request that was received last summer. Um, and it hasn't been scheduled, so that is something that we are trying to schedule because it has been a very long time. I actually, I emailed the person who requested that um review and I haven't heard back, so that's a question mark. That might not happen. What is it? It's a, it's a home and it's a homeowner making, that wants to do something that the zoning doesn't allow currently, so. So that's something that may be on the agenda for the eleventh, um and it may not be if I don't hear from it.
Yep.
Great.
Otherwise, it's the big, it's the big plan, so if anyone.
It's a big push.
It's a big push. It's a big push. Um, we have maybe another meeting of Little Room, um. But that's, that's the big push. And so if you have anyone who's, you know, friends and family, whoever who is interested in a specific topic, that is the approximate schedule. Um, I reserve the right to change it if necessary. Um, but if someone is particularly interested in, you know, whichever topic that gives some, some amount of guidance to when that might, might be happening. But the, but the gen- generally speaking, the goal would be the Wednesday before the meeting is when the agenda packet will come out. It is more recently been Thursday or last week Friday. Um, but if someone checks towards the end of the the week prior to a planning commission meeting, they'll be able to see what's on the agenda.
And just a a note for two new commissioners. The current plan expires February first of next year. Our objective is to, there there's pretty substantial public hearing notices that have to be done. Our objective is to have the plan. In council's hands so that they can reasonably take action in December before they start, before they're heavy into the budget. Because, you know, doing that end of December, January, that's when they're trying to do the annual budget. That's a really big push on them, so backing that up means that. We need to begin, starting the public hearing process in August, which means.
I think I outlined this last, last week. I think you.
Yeah, I just wanted to give like a little big picture of like.
Right, I think you. I explained, I think you ran it, was when you were running in and out of the room.
And.
Yeah, so.
Good to have it all.
I was trying to end that with, there might be a special meeting here and there in order to meet the objectives. That's why, that's why I really wanted to.
In order to.
Okay, I didn't.
I was laying all the groundwork to say.
Got it.
There may need to be a special.
We're not gonna be bi-weekly, we're gonna be weekly, right? Well, I see there's twenty days between May the twenty third and June the thirteenth. We could.
That's a, May is a five Tuesday month.
Right, so.
So we could preview some attractions. Imagine there might be another meeting there. I won't be here for the ninth of May. Quick question.
Okay. Oh, I won't be here for the ninth of May either.
Okay.
Conversations about this stuff. When we get the package.
April, but I should be able to review things by the eleventh.
When we get the packages or. For instance, we talked tonight about uh plastic reduction that you talked about, trying to frame that. Are you, do we, are you open to doing offline conversations about this or should we do it in a meeting format?
Anything that will end up in a uh. A final, nothing can end up in a final draft without having, having been approved by the full commission.
Right.
Um, having a discussion about a specific topic that was like, how do we wanna talk about this and then putting it into a draft? I don't have a problem with that. Um, just send me an email and we can set up a time to, either on the phone or you can come in or or whatever to do that. Um, that can't be a meeting of multiple people.
Right.
Um, because we don't wanna run up even close to a quorum question, because we don't wanna have to public notice. You know, daytime meetings of a planning office. Um, but yeah, specific, specific things like that, I'm always available to, uh, I'm not always available, but I have my email. And so email me and let me know, um.
If it works, it'll work.
If it works, it'll work, exactly.
Do you have all the bike staff committees comments on on transportation?
I haven't got there yet because we haven't reached that section yet. I'm very much drafting as we go.
But did you get them?
I got them, yeah, yeah. Yeah, from Erica.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, and you know, I guess as we go forward, we're probably not running into the same quorum issues that we were having for a while there, but um. You know, if you know you're gonna be out some meetings, um, just let us know just in advance, just so if it looks like we're.
Right, as soon as you know that you're not gonna be there, let Kelsey and I know so that, you know, here I'm hearing there's two people May ninth, if it becomes.
May ninth, yeah.
Three and that three becomes four.
And I'm out the twen- I'm out two, I'm missing two meetings.
It's because everybody wants to go with Jessica and I, yeah.
I'm going to a training for one for the ninth and then vacation on the twenty third, so.
Thank you, Sue. Have a great night.
George.